Planning Board is called to order. I am Jeanne McKnight, Planning Board Chair. And this open meeting of the Needham Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This meeting will not have public comment. First, we'll confirm that a quorum of the members of the Planning Board are present. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Martin Jacobs.
Present.
Adam Block.
Present.
Paul Alpert.
Present.
Ted Owens.
Present.
So we have a quorum, all members are present. Next, I'll introduce Planning Department and I don't think we have any other town staff. So the planning, the staff from the Planning Department who's with us at this meeting is our Planning Director, Lee Newman.
Yes, I'm present.
And our first agenda item is a presentation and discussion of the Highway Commercial One rezoning and planning study. So with us for that are the principal architect of Studio N A, Natasha Espada. And from also Studio N A Architects, Susan Crow Knight. All right, so Lee, oh, let me add one more thing here. Please, for those oh, I should just say, we all know this already, it's just us. But be aware that others may be able to see and hear you and anything you share or state will be a matter of public record. Also want to mention to any of the public that is tuning in that all supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda and the PowerPoint presentation we're going to see, are available on the town's website, www.nodemmas.gov. And each of the speakers will be introduced as I essentially just did. And after speakers conclude their remarks, each board member will be asked by name for any common questions or motions. If we take any votes, they will be by roll call. And I think our Planning Director, Lee Newman, has a few introductory remarks.
Yes, I just want to introduce the work that Natasha and her team have been doing for us. And I'll be very brief because I know there are some members that have limited time this morning for a meeting. But essentially, this is a follow-up to the zoning proposal that was presented to the town in October of 2019, where we looked at rezoning the Muzzy and Channel Five sites to encourage redevelopment on a scale that was more compatible with the market and our visions for the property moving forward. And there were a number of issues and concerns that were raised at that town meeting when their proposal was initially presented. And the Planning Board went back to the community in January of 2020 with a community meeting to try to get some input and direction on what were the kinds of changes that the Town Planning Board should be looking at to come up with a proposal that would receive community support. So as part of that, we looked at reducing the floor area ratio on the property. We looked at introducing housing as a potential reuse on the site. And we looked at some adjustments that might be appropriately made to height in terms of its proximity to Highland Avenue and Gould Street. So Natasha basically was charged with looking at those changes in what the original proposal had comprised and actually representing them so people could better understand their visual impact on the property. And so I'm going to let her walk you through, I think, the existing site context and basically what a presentation would look like to a community meeting on February 3rd, which incorporates those changes which we understand the community wanted to see in this redevelopment scheme for this property.
All right, and one thing I forgot I'll do now before Natasha starts. I'd like a motion to continue this meeting if we should encounter technical difficulties that make it impossible to continue in this timeframe we are in. And the motion would be to continue the meeting to January 19th at 7:15 PM. And also a motion for this meeting that we're in right now to have the vice chair act as chair if the chair should have technical difficulties.
So.
Okay, we have that motion, may I have a second?
Marty seconded.
I did.
Okay, good here. So I'll do the roll call on this. Martin Jacobs.
Hi.
Adam Block.
Hi.
Paul Alpert.
Hi.
Ted Owens.
Hi.
The Chair is I. All right, good. The floor is yours now, Natasha Espada, for the presentation.
Thank you, Jeanne. One quick question is, how much time do we have for the presentation? Just to make sure that I don't, you know, that we can make sure we get through all of it within your allotted time and that we have time for questions.
Well, Ted Owens and then maybe others too. But Ted particularly needs to leave promptly at 9:30.
Okay, so let's try to do this in 15 to 20 minutes max and then so we can have a lot of time. We can go back to some of the pieces, okay? So, thank you all for having us again. We've gone back and looked at the information from the traffic report as Lee mentioned. And we've been looking at the project with a different lens of density and use group. So again, this is the site, can you see my cursor? This is the site, it's divided into Site One and Site Two. Site One, you know, one being the Muzzy Ford and one being the Channel Five site. And so the agenda for today is just an introduction and overview of the planning effort to date. We're going to give you a summary of the existing conditions, review the proposed zoning changes, examination of traffic impacts and recommended improvements, and then a presentation of estimated fiscal impacts and a question and comment period. So this is kind of the agenda for what it will be for the community meeting. I'm not sure, Lee, if we're, and Adam, if you're going to talk about the fiscal impacts and today, but I just.
No, we're not. I think this meeting is really just going to be focused around the, your component, which was the urban design piece.
Okay, perfect.
That's the agenda for the workshop.
Okay.
Community meeting, excuse me.
Okay, so what we, just to give you just a big quick synopsis, because you're going to see a lot of drawings, just to kind of make it into a summary here is we're going to review the existing zoning, which has an FAR of .5. We've specifically been asked to look at a warehouse on the site, which is a commercial use. We are also going to look at as-of-right zoning that has been, is now 1.0 FAR. And we're going to look at two options for that. We're going to look at a program for commercial use and we're going to look at a program for mixed use, commercial and residential. And then we're going to look at the special permit zoning with an FAR of 1.35. Again, two options, an option with commercial use and an option with mixed use, commercial and residential. All of the numbers that we were getting based on the proportion of mixed use is correlated to the work that was done with the traffic study. So one of the things that we did was we analyzed Needham, an overall analysis of Needham. Again, this is a satellite view of the town. And then we looked at density in the town. And one of the things that struck us is that this is the red is the site. There's a commercial district, of course, to the north of it. But then also the corridor coming all the way from Needham Street, across the highway, down into the center of Needham and down towards Chestnut Street, is a pretty strong corridor of amenities and of density. And so across the highway, you can also see kind of, you know, all the housing that supports it behind it. And across, across the highway, you see the density of the industrial park that actually has buildings that are of a larger size. We also looked at, again, the amenities and this amenities corridor, how it actually impacts, you know, Highland Avenue as it goes into Chapel and into Chestnut Street. And then we looked also at transportation. And one of the things that we would probably suggest is a review of the site is in an area with no public transit at this moment, even though it's a main corridor. So maybe the blue, the purple is the train stations and the blue is the bus route. Maybe there's a way of looking at how the transportation and how it can impact the site in a better way. And the other thing we looked at were historic sites on the town and in adjacent towns. And what we noticed was that there really is, really are no historic sites in this vicinity where the site takes place. And so that gives an opportunity for whatever happens in that site to have, you know, to be able to look at it in a more open way. So one of the things that we did is we looked at the civic and commercial corridor of, again, starting down here in Chestnut Street as you're going through all the way up to the center of town. And then again, from the center of town all the way through towards Needham Heights. And so that you can kind of see that most of the buildings are two. There are some three-story buildings, larger civic buildings. Most of them are creating an edge on that street. So that density creates an edge that, and it's intertwined with some houses and all of that. But there's a precedent for having that corridor continue into the site. And so let's, we just wanted to go through the zoning comparison, the existing bylaw, the previous proposal and the new proposal. For the FAR, we had an existing bylaw and as-of-right of .5. Or we have a special permit of .65 to .75. The previous proposal had a by right of 1, so that would double it, and the special permit of 1.75. And the new proposal is keeping the 1 for the by right and special permit of 1.35. So that has decreased. For the height, the by right is 30 feet. The previous proposal has by right of 70 feet and special permit of 70 feet. And the new proposal will remain, except that the setbacks for certain areas will have, instead of the 54 feet closer to the street, we have 42. The front setback right now is 20 feet, 50 feet on Gould and Highland. And the new, the previous proposal had 20 feet on Gould and Highland and special permit. And the new proposal is 20 feet for both. The side setback is 20 feet and that remains for the previous proposal and the new proposal. The rear setback was 10 feet by right in the existing by, is that way in the existing bylaw. Previous proposal was 20 and 20, the new proposal is 10 and 10. Going back to where we are right now. The minimum lot area remains at 20,000 square feet. The minimum lot frontage is 100 feet and all of that remains. The maximum lot coverage, currently there's no requirement. So you could fill up the whole site if you can find a way to do the parking. Previous proposal was 65% and the new proposal will continue to be 65%. And then the traffic mitigation is proposed right now, paid by the developer. The same thing would happen with the previous and the new proposal. And so the, these are the uses, I'm sure you're familiar with what the uses are. The one use that would be added to it, and Lee, correct me if I'm wrong, is the residential multifamily use of up to 240 units.
That's correct.
Aren't we really changing the uses? Aren't these old uses being changed to conform to what's across the highway?
Yes, what's not represented on this table, and it does need to be updated, is what the use profile looks like under the, under the proposed zoning. It's not represented on this chart yet for the proposed zoning, that needs to be added in. And then the only change from the original proposal would be the addition of housing by special permit.
Right.
And what we should do is probably say which uses are not going to be, you know, from the original.
Are not going to carry forward.
Are not going to carry forward.
I think we probably need, we'll need a separate slide that more specifically talks to the use profile. Maybe we should have a slide on the dimensionals, I'll work with you on that. A slide on the uses so that it's clear what the changes are.
Yeah.
And if I may comment, Natasha, you mentioned the 42-foot height at the corner. But it's not on the chart and it's very important, so we need that on the chart.
Correct, so I'll work with Lee and Adam. We're working with us on this and we'll make sure that we're on the same page on it. But I didn't see it here, so I mentioned, you know, so I wanted to make sure that that was something that I think is important.
There are a lot of qualifying footnotes to exceptions to the setback rules. So that's going to have to be done through a series of probably of footnotes. We'll work on that so it's ready for the presentation for the community.
Okay. So the existing zoning, so now that you've seen the photos of kind of that corridor, this is the corridor when it gets to this area, it kind of disintegrates. There's some really nice houses on the right. There's wind gate on the left that is obscured by trees, but not in the winter as much. But basically, you know, it becomes a parking lot on one side and a fence on the other. And then this is looking Gould Street towards the traffic light at Highland and Gould. Again, there's a nice edge of housing on the right-hand side, right now a parking lot on the left. And then this is a view looking towards Needham from, as you're crossing over the bridge. And this is right now the view of the gateway to Needham. And this is a view from the exit highway 19B. Mary Ann had requested this view, I think it's an important view. We haven't been able to do some renderings of these yet because we, we had all the other renderings from the other streets to look at. But this is something that Lee and I are talking, that we will look at doing some renderings of this view as well. So one of the things that we did was we, from the last presentation, is that we pulled back a little bit so that you can see not only the commercial district on the other side of the highway and the proportion of those buildings, but also the proportion of the buildings with relationship to not only this industrial area next to the site, but also the street corridors you go up, that there are some buildings that are larger and that are commercial. And then there's also the Temple Best Shalom. So, and then there's the location of the new fire station. So there are some larger buildings on this corridor. And so what we wanted to do was show the proportion of the current buildings that are on the site, Channel Five and the Muzzy Ford buildings, to give a context. And then the housing across the way and the proportion of that to the site. And so right now, there, and we need to revise this a little bit. We got some more information from Lee yesterday on one more property line here. But there's, there are two sites. There's the site of Channel Five and then there's the site here of Muzzy Ford. And approximately it's 454, 454 square feet for the Muzzy Ford site and about 205,000 square feet for the Channel Five. Right now, there's 343 parking spaces required for the site for Channel Five and 757 for Muzzy Ford site.
I have a quick question. In between Site One and Site Two, there is, there's a piece of land. Does that, is that part of the area that we're rezoning? I thought it was, is that the building, I think the Connecticut School of TV or something?
That's right here?
Yes.
So that is part of, there's a property line that's right here at the edge of it. And that is part of the Channel Five site. We thought that this was part, we were, based on talking to Deborah when we were first working on it, we thought that this lot was part of Site Two.
Right.
But it's not. So our analysis is still all relevant because, you know, we're looking at it as two sites. But that is something that this piece of the site is part of Site One. So we will, for the meeting, we will revise that, we just learned this late yesterday.
Natasha, did you, did you say that between Sites One and Site Two, currently there's over 1,000 parking spaces required?
Yes, 343 for Site One and 757 for Site Two.
Can you show that on that table that we saw?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So maybe we just add a whole parking, a line on parking, right?
Yeah.
The thing is that all of the parking, and we can do it as a footnote, Lee, is 300 square feet per one space, or one space for 300 square feet, except for the warehouse, which is one for 800. So we can show that as a footnote as well. But it's 1 to 300, which is something, you know, that we need to, that is also, you know, to discuss.
I think on the Muzzy site, you know, a portion of the parking is the requirement for the building. And then the other portion of that parking is just basically to park cars that are for sale. So we should probably look at how that's represented too, so it's clear.
Yeah, I think, I think it should be separated.
To separate the two for right now to show, okay.
The one, because it appears now as if everything is based on the square footage.
Well, this is, this is also parking that's maximum parking. If you don't, if you don't fulfill the .5, you don't have to do that amount of parking. So it all depends on, you know, that's maximum parking, so maybe we.
Well, I see.
Talking, if someone were to develop something by right, these are the parking requirements that they're obligated to. It's not a reflection of the present parking situation at Muzzy or Channel Five or that.
Yeah, that's not clear because we're talking about the existing site.
The building of .5 FAR divided by 300 square feet per space.
Right, so this is maximum, if you were to max the FAR on both sites, that is the requirement for parking. That is not the current requirement because the FAR is not maximized. So, but it would probably be good to be able to document what is existing. Okay. So one of the things that we looked at is a, for both of them, is what would happen if you were to put a one-story warehouse? And, and how many spaces would we need? And we figured that we could probably get, we could meet it by .35. And it's a one-story building that is .35 FAR with, I think it's about 140 spaces, is that true, Susan?
Yes.
And so, and that's because it's 800 square foot per space. And so that's what it would look like. So one of the things that you can do right now is to have a building of this size within, within the as-of-right. And as you can see, it actually exceeds the size of some of the buildings across the highway. And so the proportion of the building compared to the building surrounding it and to the community surrounding it is fairly large.
Natasha, I noticed, I looked through this yesterday and noticed this, but I want to mention it now because I see it for the first time. Next to the proposed warehouse is this black building or something.
Yeah.
And that appears on every, many of the slides and there's no explanation of what it is.
Susan, do you know what that is?
I think that's the Muzzy Ford building. I think it's an overlay of the existing condition.
So we could, we could Photoshop it out and.
Yeah, I think so because it's obviously not going to be there.
No, you're right. Yeah, I think for these existing conditions, we basically showed, kept what was there underneath, but we can remove that.
I think it shows even on some of the later slides that are showing.
Okay.
I think you might want to show with and without it. Because it does give a contrast, shows your contrast of how much bigger this warehouse would or could be than the existing building. So I would show both ways.
There's actually two buildings, though.
Yes.
Well, we're on top of the other building.
Exactly, but it's, so I, I see the point. One thought that, you know, a smaller working group on this is thinking about is whether or not to include the warehouse itself as part of the main deck as Natasha goes through or instead to have it if it comes up as a question. In other words, it would be part, if someone asked a question about it, it would not be part of the, of the main presentation. Because it could be, it could be seen as being used to create a fear and to drive, use that fear to drive the context for what we're trying to do to save us from this warehouse. And that, that's not really the, you know, that's not really the intent, but Mary Ann had felt strongly about that and, and I had understood that and agreed with it.
The only thing that I can say just, I mean, I, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just giving you just another perspective is that if you don't show them, one of the things that they were like, oh, we don't want to change everything, right? People are afraid of change. And so one of the things that we want to say is, this is what your gateway to Needham can look like with the current zoning. It can be smaller buildings if they're commercial buildings or other things, but this is what you could get. We're not trying to scare you, we're just trying to tell you that if you don't revise the zoning, even just the uses, this is a potential of what could occur and it could occur by right. I don't know, that's just the other way of thinking about it. So it could be, you're thinking, Mary Ann is thinking about it more as it could be a scaring tactic.
That's the way it was seen at the last presentation.
Yeah, exactly.
Trying, of trying to scare them about having a warehouse there.
Okay.
Well, that's what scares me. Why not say it?
Yeah, but I think, but I think it shows the scale of building that's allowable by right. I mean, that you, you know, this fear of a large building on that property.
That's, but that's not, I don't want, I don't want the neighborhood to focus in on that and they might. What I want them to focus in on is we have a vision for what this area could be. And it's not what our vision is.
That's exactly what Mary Ann's point was. It shifts the focus of the conversation to this, oh my God, warehouse maybe, as opposed to focusing on what our proposal is, it's a distraction.
So, so if we keep it in the back, then maybe we can just say, as of now, you could, by as-of-right, you could build a warehouse that is approximately, you know, half of the site. The size of half of the site. And then if they want to say, well, what would that look like, then you can show it.
And to be honest with you, I'm looking at this picture, I don't find this very scary because it's setback.
Paul, I agree with you.
From Highland Avenue, you don't see it from Gould Street.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
Okay, so we can, I mean, we can move this to the back of the presentation and have it as a place, you know, to supporting and.
Yep.
Okay. So the first thing that we did is the as-of-right zoning plan. So we looked at it again as one building and then as multiple buildings. And this is something that, after the presentation, you know, one of the questions that we have for you is that something that, based on proportion on site, is that something that you would want to put in the zoning? Or is that something that the special permit, you know, but, but as-of-right, you can build a five-story building that's 70 feet high. And one of the changes that we made right now is that it's 200 feet, we're recommending 200 feet from Gould Street and also, it depends on where you take it and we need to figure out where to take it because the site slopes. But it's about the same, you know, the average is about the same, 200 feet from Highland Avenue. When we started looking at the building and the views from this area, this building at 70 feet seemed really, really, really large. So right now, the red, we're showing three colors. The red is a corporate office space, the blue is R and D, and the green, which you'll see in a second, is retail. And so for this particular one, the FAR of 1.0 would require six, if you, if you were to max it, 685 parking spaces for the site, for the Channel Five site. And a building that is 205,000 square feet and a building of 454,000 square feet with 1,500 parking spaces.
Natasha, Natasha, there's an issue with this one and with many of the subsequent sites as well. The green, which is indicated as retail, is also used for, to show the open space or the landscaping.
Maybe we need a different hue.
I think you do, it comes up in every slide. And, and particularly in this side, it's exactly the same color green on the legend and it makes, would make people think.
Yes.
You're talking about a string of retail all around the edge.
Yes, I agree, we'll change the hue of that. So, so that the retail is a different hue than the, than the landscape. One of the things that we should also, I'm just noticing, Lee, the, and Adam, the spreadsheet that you put together, we should also put that we need 20% open space.
Okay.
I just noticed that that wasn't there. So the green, yes, you're right. Notice that that wasn't there. So the green, yes, you're right. Open space and it's also showing as the same hue as the retail. So we'll change one or the other. Probably make the the green for the open space the same color as this one over here. Um, but so what that shows for some reason, I'm not wanting to, what that shows is that you can get a large building with parking at the rear of the site with retail at the first level.
And so the gray is uh, for both buildings is a parking garage.
The gray for both buildings is a parking garage and probably we should put a P over it.
Yes.
You had mentioned that and and we didn't do that, so we need to.
Because it it looks, it looks as though that that's actually the retail section.
Okay.
So we want to make sure that that's clear, that that's a parking garage. And uh, and now you can see Jean's point with, you can see a little bit of uh, of retail uh, from this angle, uh, which is great. If you have to give context to how small it is.
Yeah, well, it's the entire, I think, so right now, the the corporate headquarters is forty-two percent. The R and D over here is forty-two point five percent also, and the retail is fifteen percent. So it is fairly small compared to the rest of the program. And those purport- those percentages are based on the traffic study. And so what we did is we did views looking down Gould Street. So the building is way set back, but this is, you know, parking all in the front. And then this is Wing Gate and 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 then here is a view from Highland Avenue looking towards Newton, um, towards one twenty-eight. And so the building is set back. So it looks, you know, like one of the buildings probably that you would see um, when you get off on uh, Route Nine in Wellesley, you know, one of the corporate buildings that has a parking lot in front.
Is that one, two, how many stories is it?
Five stories.
Okay, thank you. One, two.
So what we did is we, for these, for the as of rights, we just put um, we we did more intricate uh facade development for um, for the special permit. But for this one, at least we're highlighting the floors.
Okay.
The first floor being the retail floor.
And that's based on a two hundred squ- uh, two hundred foot setback off of Gould and off of Highland to get to that accelerated height. Is that correct?
Correct. So from, so the two hundred feet and we need to determine where we're, you know, because this is angled with where we want to show that. Um, it's about two hundred and two hundred and bef- in front of that line, it's forty-two feet. So it's a three-story building. And after that line, it's a five-story building, which is um, seventy feet high.
So just so everybody understands, um, we are, so we actually are increasing the depth of the setback along Highland Avenue and the interchange for for the, for the point at which you can move from the forty-two feet to seventy feet. From what was in the original base proposal presented back in twenty nineteen.
Right. So it used to be, the line used to be in this area here, thinking that at the edge of the residential, we would stop it. What happens is you get a seventy-foot tower right here at the corner.
Which is a significant point that we want to make because it shows a concession as a result of town meeting and the previous community meeting a year ago.
Folks, it's five after nine. I think we need to move a little faster.
Okay, so this is, this is what it would look like in the current, with the current setbacks. And so then this is the option one B, multiple buildings. And this is showing, you know, again, forty-two, forty-two and fifteen percent for, the forty-two and forty-two is R and D and um, and office space. And then the retail is fifteen percent at about a hundred thousand square feet. So, um, about two hundred and eighty thousand of each of the other two. And one of the things that we have maintained is based on the traffic study, the entrance here and an entrance into TV place. And so that is the proportion of building you know, on the site. And we will, Jean, we will remove this.
Yes.
I think you're completely right. I I don't know why I never saw it until right now.
And the the green retail space on these sketches looks a little odd. It's it's supposed to indicate the first floor of the building would be retail.
Correct. So.
It almost looks to me like it's the the ground around it.
I I I think what we might do is keep the green for the landscape and change the screen to a color that is, doesn't look like it's the the landscape. Maybe it's.
But maybe yellow.
We're using yellow as housing, will maybe we'll purple or something. I think we need a color that differentiates itself from the two that are there because we did want to show this pulled back so you could see the full context. But we have to make sure that that's really um, you know, bright and 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 you can tell it's not landscape. You're completely right.
This is a really good slide, which you just showed us because that shows, that really shows the difference between the forty-two feet and the seventy feet.
Yes.
And so this is a view of what that three stories feels like across the street from Wing Gate and across. So it's it's fairly, pretty much fairly a very similar proportion.
Um, I want to s- suggest that it needs more articulation of of windows and that sort of thing.
Well, we weren't, we weren't doing that um, for the as of right options.
We'll show you the other ones really quickly.
Yep, got it.
And so this is what it would look like, the forty-two as you're approaching Needham. And then this is the higher, the five, the seventy-foot uh, space here on the the building on the right. And then this is looking at it um, with the multiple buildings on Highland Avenue towards Newton. And then this, we can go back to these. I just want to make sure that Ted sees the entire presentation. Um, and so then this is looking at, now we have thirty percent corporate headquarters, thirty percent R and D, there, ten point five percent retail and and almost thirty percent residential. And we we kept the residential on the street side, knowing that there is a precedent for the residential being on the street side across from it. It's all uh, forty-two feet high. And then there's the uh, co- corporate headquarters. The retail is underneath the um, the yellow and then the R and D is here and the red is here. Again, we're looking at it as one full site. Uh, but again, it's in total six hundred and fifty-nine thou- almost six hundred and sixty thousand square feet. Again, the the gray is parking, we'll add P on top of it. And so that's what this would look like. And again, Jean, we'll change this color here at the bottom so that it doesn't look like landscape. Um, so one of the uh, important things to note is that uh again, again, the yellow is the housing and we're putting it against the residential neighborhoods. And all of the uh, corporate and R and D is kind of pushed back into the site.
Just a quick, just a quick question, is I, is two hundred thousand square feet of space roughly equivalent to give or take two hundred and forty units?
Yes.
Yes, of course, okay. That's proportionally.
So we could, we could also say that.
Yes.
Yes, that was based off of the sp- a specific proposal in mixed use one twenty-eight.
Great, thank you.
And so that um this is the option two mixed use also, very, you know, I think we just went through this, very similar. And then um, then we go to the special permit where now you could have an F A R of one point three five with a total square footage for the site of eight hundred and sixty-six thousand square feet. And so um, we we were separating it and to get into forty-two, forty, forty-two point five, forty-two point five for R and D and cor- and corporate and for retail fifteen percent. And so that's what this would look like on the site. And then this is what it would look like. It's set back here on Gould Street. This is what it would look like as we are approaching Needham from Newton. And then this is what it would look like um, as you are coming down Highland Avenue towards the highway. And then we looked at option one B, which is again dividing it up into multiple buildings with um, again, the eight hundred and sixty-six thousand square feet. And so that's what this would look like. And so this, we added more articulation to it, Jean, here. Showing, this is what, you know, this is housing versus the the corporate and the R and D with retail at the lower level. And uh, this is also what it would look like coming across the bridge into Needham and from Highland Avenue towards Newton. And then again, option two mixed use, this includes the housing, again, for the eight hundred and sixty-six thousand square feet. So it's bigger than um, the other one. And so this one um, is go- looking down Gould Street. This is still the uh, the the office R and D space, so this is the housing. And so we just added some windows for articulation that were smaller than the other windows. Um, just to kind of give just but we're not, we're not trying to design a building. We're just trying to give scale. And that's it.
That's good. Natasha, thank you. Looks good.
And I particularly want to give Ted um, an opportunity if he hasn't said his any concerns. He has a questions that he's able to do that before he has to leave.
So, so thank you very much. I I have to agree with Paul. I think uh, this is excellent work. Um, I think that we're eighty-five percent of the way there. I think that um, you know, we've we've had a variety of comments in terms of, you know, things, slides we need to add regarding the forty-two foot height, uh, the renderings from the ramp. Uh, move the warehouse slide to the end. Um, and um, mark the parking with a P, you know, details like that. Um, but I would actually like to suggest uh, the following, that we go into the February third meeting um, with with the final version. That the purpose to me of, if there's any valid purpose to the February third meeting, and as you know, I question the wisdom of it. Um, I believe that the the purpose of the meeting is for us to present at length our vision and what we think it should look like. Um, it should not be uh, cut short because, you know, at town meeting, you only have fifteen minutes. Um, you know, I would spend a full hour going through this and um, I don't think um, that we will get any new feedback in that meeting. Um, you know, we will get the the comments that we expect. Uh, why are you rushing this? Why don't you make it a soccer field? Things like that. So I'm going to suggest something really outrageous. I'm going to suggest that we meet again next Thursday morning and review the next uh, next version of this because I think we need to devote a tremendous amount of time between now and February third to absolutely nailing this down tight. So that once we get to February third, um, we are in selling mode rather than in listening mode. Um, I think we've been in listening mode uh, in the past. And I don't think that we're going to get any comments that we don't know. I think this looks really good. Um, you know, I have my own personal quirks, as you know. Um, I I would not uh, uh, use this gateway site for housing, but you know, that's my own personal point of view. Um, I I don't entirely subscribe to the theory of let the market decide. Uh, you know, our job as the planning board is to do the zoning. Um, but I'm content to allow some flexibility for the don't, for the developer, um, and deal with it in the special permit. But I really think that we should do the revision of this in the next week and that we should get together again next Thursday morning and go through it again until we have taken care of all the little uh, nits and nats that we identified today. But I I think this looks really, really good.
So before we get into any other uh, comments by others, um, uh, what what is the response to meeting next Thursday morning? Um, I certainly think it's a good idea.
I'm in.
I'm with me.
It sounds like we're, well, is uh, Paul, did you say you're able to?
Yes.
Okay, uh, good. It sounds like we will schedule that.
Yep.
Until ten. I don't know what time the meeting typically is, or is it in the evening?
Oh, in the morning.
Thirty to ten.
Yep.
Okay, I I'm just, I'm just verifying that I, that I can make that time. I'll be back to you in a couple of minutes on that if we could continue. I'm sorry. Have to check up an appointment.
I just want to add a comment to something that Ted said. Ted said that it's our job to do zoning. It's also our job as a planning board to create vision for what, for what the planning board um, wants, wants the town to look like and to have. And so it it's, it's not just creating zoning, it's, it's, it's creating, it's creating zoning with a vision.
Yeah, I I agree with you, Paul.
Yeah, and this is a beautiful vision, personally.
I I I agree with you. I think those things go together.
Yep.
I also want to remind people that for the community meeting, we had planned to have G P I do a short presentation on the traffic piece. Um, so maybe it makes sense then for Adam and I to try to work with them, um, to set, to have them be part of the, of the meeting um, next Thursday, just so we can see their component as well. That makes sense?
Yep.
What I.
Lee, what about fiscal impact? Would that be part of it too?
I'm not gonna, we weren't going to do a formal presentation on that. Um, Adam, I think was just going to reference back to the study that was done that Judy Barrett did. Because she studied, she studied the F A R at the one, at a one point three. What I don't have is basically a fiscal impact study that looks at the, at the housing piece. And I am not going to have that uh, for February the third. I'll have that for the zoning hearing, but I will not have this, that analysis updated to incorporate housing.
So I would, uh, what I'd like to do now, if I, if I may, uh, Madam Chair is
Yes.
Uh, chat a little bit about uh, about the agenda and the timing of uh, some thi- uh, some things, just so people have a greater context. The meeting itself is uh, is scheduled to be about ninety minutes long. Um, and in that ninety minutes, I think Ted, um sixty minutes would be devoted to content and thirty minutes would be devoted to questions. And it's not that we would necessarily answer a question in the moment. It's just to let people speak and to hear their comments and questions. Um, and that within that sixty minutes, we would, we would hit the uh, uh, we don't want to distract about too much of what we did before and too much of what the current existing condition is. We want to make a couple of brief highlights and then jump into, you know, the great work that Natasha's team uh, has done. Talk about the spine and the corridor, uh, uh, the commercial corridor, uh, you know, as a hub, uh, local and and regional hub. And um, and then also talk about uh, the zoning changes, uh, dimensional changes. Um, and then also into the traffic, uh, and then into the fiscal uh, impact. And the fiscal impact uh, will be a minor part. It would be let, three minutes at most, just to touch on what we already know from the prior report that Judy did. And to, and to say that we're, you know, we're awaiting uh, uh, more information to complete the fiscal impact, including residential. And then, uh, and then the summary of this, the conclusion is to reference our goals and our, our vision. What we're trying to articulate here and how we see, uh, you know, this is improvement for the town and why it's important for us.
I think that sounds great. Can I ask Lee one question about the fiscal impact? Is it fair to say that including the residential would result in a fiscal impact that is less beneficial to the town than a hundred percent commercial?
Yes.
Because of the schoolchildren.
Well, because, yes, because it, because of the schoolchildren. The, yes, the retail will bring down the value. I mean, excuse me, the residential will bring down the value.
Yeah, so I I don't think we need to have the specific details of all the options. Um, you know, y- you can make the general comment that we'll do the calculation for you before town meeting. Um, but you can anticipate that the fiscal impact with the residential component will not be as beneficial uh, because of these other reasons.
Right.
That's always fifty-five and older.
Yeah. If if I could uh, say something about that, um, I think it, yeah, you'd expect that a building like this would be one and two-bedroom units. And uh, as I recall from the, we, I think we did a fiscal impact on the um
Excuse?
No, the um, Hattie Gray Mount site. And um, um, they, what we found uh, was that um, it's generally the affordable units and their own. it's generally the affordable units and their own, you know, this isn't a forty B, so it's just a small number of affordable units, but there would be some, um, I assume, uh, uh, that we would have an affordability requirement, uh, as we do in many of our other districts. And, uh, it's, it's usually the affordable units, uh, the two bedroom units, um, that generate children. And the ones that are not affordable generally do not generate children. Um, and I expect that the fiscal study will, will be along those lines and the impact on the schools will not be a terrible impact.
So I, I just have a good question on that. Is it because, um, the affordable housing gives equitable housing to all different uh, generations of people that are coming in, right? And that's why they usually have children. And then when, when, when it's not the affordable housing or the forty B housing, whatever, i- is it that you, you find people that are, um, later on in their lives purchasing these units or early on? Is that why?
Well, you're, you're talking about purchasing. This isn't necessarily condominium. Um, no, I'm, no, I'm suggesting that people who are willing to pay, you know, rent and usually in new buildings like this, the rent is pretty high to live in a one or two bedroom unit. If they, if that family is a family with children of, of a, an upper middle income, they would prefer a house. Um, and but, uh, lower income families who can't afford a house are glad to have a two bedroom apartment. And that's, that's what, I believe I'm remembering correctly.
No, this is interesting. I'm just interested in hearing about this. And what about middle class families? Would they be attracted to this?
Well, if, you know, middle class families who can't afford a house in need, and would probably just assume move, move to towns out as, as create their life with their children in two bedroom apartment.
Natasha, I can share with you the fiscal impact study that was done by
Yeah, that would be interesting.
On the Hartney-Greymont site and also the work that was done when we did the mixed use overlay, because there was a fiscal impact study that was done uh, for those housing units. And you can see that the assumptions that were made in both those reports and the conclusion.
Okay, thank you. No, I'm just interested in it. It's super interesting to understand.
Right, and I don't want to go into great details, but just to say that the, even the select board, which at first was, oh, impact on schools, impact on schools, backed off that when they realized, when they actually saw the study.
It, it also impacts what we do with, with the PBBC. That's why I'm asking, just in general, to keep that in mind for the schools.
I'd like to, can I ask Natasha two questions? One is kind of right to the point. The other one is more open ended. First one is, we talked a little bit last time about lab space, R and D space, which I, I understand to be greatly in demand right now versus office space, which people are not too sure about. And, um, Lee, Lee believes that, uh, the parking and traffic impacts of both of those are similar. And so that showing what we've shown, we probably don't have to distinguish further. Do you generally agree with that?
I agree. Um, we're doing a project in the Marine Industrial Park Seaport area in Boston, and it it requires a significant amount of parking. The issue, the difference is that they have the silver line right next to it, and they have public transportation where there's no public transportation to the site. So that's why we brought up the analysis of reviewing the bus line that could ameliorate the parking requirement for office and R and D.
Okay, and the other
Marty, I was, the, the traffic study does show differences in terms of the, uh, lab space and, and the corporate office space. Uh, corporate office space is going to have a greater impact during the peak hours. Office, um, lab space does not have as great a impact during the peak hours and, and the traffic is more spread out across the day. So
But it's traffic versus parking.
Yes, tra- that's traffic.
Parking would be the same. It's just R and D works different hours than retail. I mean, than, than office. Office could be, you know, eight to five, nine to five, where R and D, we find, you know, depends on shifts and depends on different things.
Okay. All right. The other question is more open ended, which is having worked on this in far greater detail than I think most of us have, Natasha, what would you like to see different about this? Do you see any flaws in our vision here?
I, I think it's come a long way from the beginning where we had not visualized it and you had seventy feet right against this. You know, you had a five story building across from these houses and across from, I think the one thing that I do think is, is, um, for me, um, creating an urban edge on the site versus having a parking lot with a building behind it to look like a, an industrial business park, you know, office park. To me, that's beneficial to our community. And so, um, in creating, continuing this corridor that kind of gets eroded at our, at our gateway. Um, so, so, um, I prefer the schemes that have the proportion of building be more in tune with what's happening on this side of the highway than what's happening on the other side of the highway. So when you do the one story, sorry, the, the one story, these buil- the building can be fairly large and meet um, the, all the criteria. And, and the experience on the street and the experience as the gateway to Nida to me is not as impactful a, as an urban plan as it is when you have something, you know, when the buildings are of a scale that's similar to what is there, just because this is such a unique site and create an edge um, into, into our community versus a void. So that, that's kind of, so if there is a way of having this corner here be, um, encouraged, and I'm not really sure how, you know, I know there were a lot of talks with Deborah about not telling people what to do, but encouraging it and giving incentives or however. I don't really know how you propose that. I think it would, this corner here is very beneficial to the neighborhood, to the town, to the gateway, to contain, keeping an urban edge that is of scale and, um, appropriate, um, for Highland Avenue.
All right. Thank you for that. I think we all need to think about that.
Yes, because that really, that really shapes how the zoning is written. I mean, if you want, if you, if you want to encourage what Natasha's talking about or mandate it, then it's a different zoning approach than what we currently have now. Um, so
I sugge- I have a suggestion. Now, we could get into more detail at a subsequent meeting, but, um, uh, maybe there's some way of incentivizing, um, housing along that edge and not allowing it in the back part, uh, with a higher rise. Um, because assuming that there's a market for multifamily housing and that developers would come forth, um, if it's incentivized to be along the edge, it's a possibility anyway.
Uh, I hate to depart, but I have to sign out. Uh, we're starting, uh, here at North Hill, three days of vaccinations, three hundred a day for the next three days.
Good for you. Great.
We got a very, very busy, busy three days ahead of us.
Well, we will miss you, so you will be dearly departed.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Well, I mean, you know, I don't know if people want to talk about Natasha's last thoughts there today or whether maybe we should postpone that till a week from today, but, um, I think that's important to think about.
I do, my, my initial reaction, um, anyway, I think it's a good idea that we all continue to contemplate it is, I, um, I like the idea of, um, creating an urban edge because I think if I understand you correctly, Natasha, creatively, what you're seeing when you look back, um, when you zoom out from a wider view, you have this spine, this really, this commercial spine, and then there's just this void, just this void of space. And then it, and then there is this, um, smaller, um, much smaller dots of commerce down the spine, running down the center of town and down Chestnut. So this does give a creative continuity for what you're talking about. And I, I think it's important to note that it's in scale, in, uh, it's at scale in keeping with what's already there. Um, and I agree with you that creatively it's creating that urban edge. I think that's beneficial. Uh, and I think that to accommodate that, I think, um, we probably should include that uh, as that's how we would like it to be, um, in the, in the zoning and make it required. I, I would say that the alternative is basically that the building is set a little further back and, and you have more parking up front in that section. Is that right?
Um, hold on. I was just trying to show you like the, you know,
That's fine.
The urban edge, that, to me, when I was doing this analysis with, with our group, the parts of the, of the spine that seemed to call attention to me more, that were more, um, successful were the parts that had the buildings that created the edge versus, you know, the other side of parking lots. So just to, um, I think, you know, even, even a, a garden creates an edge, a different type of edge, right? But to not, but even, um, as I was going up and down Highland, Highland by, um, between, uh, uh, the library, the, the houses made for a beautiful edge. And then all of a sudden you had some sporadic buildings with no, no continuous edge that felt like there were little mini office parks. And then all of a sudden you have this beautiful house next to it and you have, you know, the temple and other places that also make an edge. So, sorry. So you were talking about, um, the, 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 the ones that make an edge, but the where the parking
I, I like the idea of creating that urban edge. I think if that's our vision, that we should really make it a mandate. In other words, what we're saying is we, we don't want to see, uh, we don't want to see a mass parking lot at that corner.
Right. This is, this is a very different feel. If you have a building that's five stories high with a big parking lot in front, it's a very different feel than creating a more, an urban edge that is, you know, three stories high that relate to all of the buildings and to the neighborhoods that are around it. And this, this, you know, this is a corporate headquarters. Um, that doesn't, I wouldn't want to walk towards it. Let's put it that way. It feels more vehicular.
The other comment that I, that I would raise to the group is that it's, uh, it's very uncommon in a mixed use development to have residential and office or residential and lab. That the vast majority of proper mixed use from a residential context is residential and, uh, and, uh, ancillary retail. So, you know, we should give that a little bit of, you know, thought, I think. Uh, because I, it's important that you depict that Natasha, that you show what that could potentially look like. But the, uh, the tenants or the owners of condos, should it be owner owned versus, uh, you know, rented, um, you know, they, they don't want to be fifty feet from a corporate office tower. It also changes dramatically the, uh, I think what would be considered as, as retail as amenities. The amenities of one may be different than the amenities of, uh, lab space versus retail amenities for, you know, for, uh, predominantly seniors, let's say. Um, so, uh, so we should just, you know, be aware that it's we're talking about residential and including it, but it's unlikely that it would be developed in a mixed use between residential lab space and office space. Does that make sense?
I, I, I want to recognize Paul, but just one quick co- comment, Adam. We are going to have a cap on the number of residential units. Um, so that might, uh, mean that it wouldn't be fully developed.
So my, Paul. You're right. So Adam just raised two points and I want to comment on both points. The first one is on the urban edge, which I agree with the concept. I'm having a very difficult time envisioning how we incorporate that into a zoning bylaw. Basically how we mandate in a zoning bylaw, which may not even take effect for ten or fifteen or twenty years. Uh, as a, you know, when a developer actually comes in and develops this, um, how, 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 how we draft a zoning bylaw that requires that a building be along the edge. But maybe I leave that to Lee. I don't know.
I'm not, I'm thinking about it. I'm not really quite sure how to do it. I will probably reach out to some people to figure out how to do it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't know how to do it. My second comment is on the, on the, um, uh, uh, commercial portion being retail, if there's going to be residential rather than office. I think we're too much getting into the weeds for where we are now on that. I don't know that the scale of the buildings will change and all that we're doing right now is showing what the scale of the buildings will look like, because that's what the zoning really goes to. And whether that the, the, um, uh, the, the seventy foot building in the back is going to be a, a, uh, a department store or a group of small stores like Quincy Market, or whether it's going to be um, uh, office or R and D, I don't think it will change the scale of the building.
And I just comment on that, just picking up on exactly exactly what Paul is saying. I think the issues Adam raises are good issues, but they're issues for the developer, not for us. Okay. The other thing is going back to the urban edge concept, to the extent that we're scaring people, I would say, use the word edge, don't use the word urban. That will scare people.
Yes.
They don't want to be in the city. That's why they're in Needham.
A creative edge.
Whatever. Just don't use the word urban.
Paul, just thinking quickly about, you know, a strategy to kind of encourage the three building profile. I mean, one strategy would be to drop your, um, as of right FAR and then basically for a special permit, um, one of the criteria would be, you know, that you could access that with, you know, with buildings that were of a scale that was comparable to what was happening around it, where the goal was to create an urban edge. Um,
An edge.
The FAR, the FAR would be, would be the FAR as a right would be low for a singular building, but then if you want to grab the higher FAR, then you had to have the multiple buildings. You had to respect the corner. You had to have the urban edge. And those would be the criteria for the special permit.
Okay.
I'll say edge, Marty. I'll say edge.
That's another, that would be another way of maybe
I'll cough when she says, "er."
Just want to respond with, to what Lee said, because, um, when you present the dimensional, um, differences, um, it, 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 it seemed to make sense when we had, um, a higher FAR of one point seven, that, you know, as of right was one and, um, special permit was one point seven. When you have, you're just going from one to one point three five, it doesn't seem like that much of a change. Uh, and that's, uh, so I'm responding to what Lee said and thinking, I wonder if our as of right FAR should actually be a little lower. So we'll have to think about that maybe, but it's hard to think about that and give direction between now and next week unless we do it immediately.
Because I think what we want to do in order to, to accomplish the vision that we want to accomplish is to make it more difficult for somebody to build something as of right. We want them, we want them in front of us on a special permit application so that we can start putting our vision into what they, they present to us and saying, well, you know, why don't you do this and why don't you do that, you know, during the special permit process. But if they can do the whole project as of right, they don't have to come to us that, you know, we lose, we lose control.
Right.
Of, uh, what goes there.
Is that, and that includes our impact on mitigation too for traffic and other things. Is that right?
No, the traffic mitigation is really covered under a site plan approval.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. And our ability to, um, uh, make, uh, requirements, uh, a- as, as we discussed from that case that, uh, uh, we talked about on, on, um, uh, on the two projects that came to us and said, we want our used to be as of right instead of special permit. And we said, no. Our, our ability to make those changes is greatly diminished on a site plan uh, permit than it is on a, um, on a building special permit.
So I'd be, I'd be, I'd be curious to know, we're talking, I think, right now at one point three five of eight hundred and something square feet of development. Is that right, Lee?
Eight hundred and sixty-six versus, uh,
Six hundred something.
Six hundred, yeah.
At one, so
Six hundred and fifty-nine. So basically two hundred thousand square feet from one to the other.
So just to give people a sense of context, that's the equivalent of like a, um, uh, that's the equivalent of a, you know, a Costco, uh, or, uh, or a Walmart in terms of size. Um, and uh, um, so I would, you know, to your point, uh, which is a very good one, that we reduce the FAR, Paul. I'd wonder what the reduction would be if we were at one, if we were at zero point eight five. That would be closer probably to maybe four hundred and fifty thousand square feet versus eight hundred.
Basically, half of the one point three five is what you're saying.
Pretty close. Not quite, but pretty close.
Right, but, right, or, yeah, that would be point, one point six, so.
I mean, I guess I'm looking for the threshold under which people make the decision not to use the F, the as-of-right. That's what you, really what you want. You want, you want it to be so low that somebody's going to jump into the special permit process.
Right.
In order, in order to ac- access the added value.
But presumably, we want there to be a significant difference between the current zoning and the future zoning too. So, I, you know, the point eight-five is is significantly up from the point five, so it probably does that.
We might want to go point eight or point seven-five. Point seven-five might be too low.
I think, I think, I think between zero point eight and zero point eight-five is bingo. The current, the current scenario by special permit as it, by special permit under existing zoning is zero point seven-five.
Right.
By special permit, right.
Yeah. So point, point eight, is that what we're headed with this?
It's going to require Natasha to make some changes in some of these drawings.
It will, yeah.
It's a lot of changes, because we have to, we have to basically recalculate everything and recalculate all the parking. We can do it. I'm just saying, it's, it's not, um, it's a big, it's a big change visually, you know, not, not for the renderings possibly as much if we can help that, but we, we can talk to Lee about it.
Then let me make this suggestion, because I, you know, we are, and you are Natasha, very time constrained. Let's leave it where it is at one. But, but say at the meeting that the planning board is considering reducing the one as-of-right to a lower to a lower figure in order to encourage um, having, having the edge.
Maybe we could put it into that Excel spreadsheet where you could say consideration, you know, for point five, eight-five.
I, 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 I do want to think about that for a minute, because I worry that what may happen is uh, the community might say, well, let's just do this. It's a smaller project for the residential, uh, so the impact on the residents will be smaller. Let's just do it as-of-right for uh, uh, you know, whatever that lower uh, density is. Or that the special permit be that lower density. I just want to think that through a little bit.
Having a low density for the, for the special permit totally, in my mind, totally takes away our vision.
Yes, I know. That's exactly what I'm worried about happening. So I want to, so I, I, I completely agree with what you're saying, Paul. And uh, that we, that we want to encourage um, uh, the special permit. And the way to do that, as we're talking, is to reduce um, uh, the, the density by right. I just want to be careful how we present that, because uh, it's a marketing question for the, you know, for the uh,
Right.
for residents, that's all.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think the marketing is, is the value that you get with the urban edge and, and this, and the, and how that reinforces the spine and how it's really consistent with what's happening all around it, because the buildings are more proportional.
And also, you're absolutely right, and it's equally important what Paul was just mentioning about uh, about how uh, we can exact more control over the process and uh, and give a greater vision if it's before, if it's before us, if it's by right, we'll have very little control. Uh, and we have to explain what uh, what's import, why that's important. Why that control is important and beneficial to the town. Excuse me. Marty, thanks for asking Natasha that question. What do you think? That really opened up this conversation in a, in a, in a really interesting way.
Um, I want to, I was just looking to see um, if there were any attendees and uh, just want to point out, and I'm glad to see them, that Katie, Katie King and Mary and Cooley of the support are tuned in. Okay.
We still have Natasha. Are we missing anything else?
No, one thing that, that Lee asked me to do when I sent her was, um, and I'm not sure if this is related to this particular piece, but just wanted to, to make sure that you had seen it, and if is uh, sustainable zoning.
I have, no, I have not shared that. I will share that with them.
Yeah, we just, we just sent some examples of what's going on in other towns uh, by the Rocky Mountain Institute gave information about different towns in Massachusetts and what they're doing for that. And Somerville um, right now is, is the leader. Somerville and Cambridge are the leaders and in Boston of it. But there are all other towns, including Concord and others, that have adopted some sustainable strategies to their zoning. So just wanted to make sure that you knew that we had done some research on that.
To provide that information. For the governor, right now, the climate change bill uh, includes a provision to have cities and towns be able to, it's, you know, the reporting has been to opt-in. I assume what they mean is uh, um, that, that the new law would, would bless the idea of bylaws and ordinances in this direction.
And do you have a feel, because, you know, through the BSA and um, NIOP has their own ideas and ACUC has their own ideas, that I, I heard that the governor was not, um, was probably not going to sign the bill. Do you, do you have any updates on that, Jean?
No, I haven't. I have no updates, but they, I, I, I agree, NIOP as opposed to that provision of the bill.
We know, yeah. I've been working on it for, for months, um, looking at it from different angles and, and we saw the um, what NIOP wrote, uh, George Chester wrote on the Globe about it. So I can share that information with some of you, just um, and, and we were, we did an opinion pieces rebuttal, so.
While, while we have uh, uh, some of the, the attendees uh, from town, um, I wonder if we could ask them if they have any questions, if they want to raise or, uh, or if they have any comments.
Clay, could you help facilitate that for us?
Uh, certainly, if um, anybody from the audience would like to raise their hand, I guess, is the best way to go about that.
So, Mary Ann or Katie, if you.
Mary Ann raised her hand.
All right, Mary Ann, you can um, unmute yourself.
Am I on? I don't know how this works.
Yes.
Um, okay, I, I guess I just would have said that um, I'm, I'm thinking about the notion of lowering the by-right FAR. My initial gut reaction would be not to make any change. I think people who are interested in this parcel will be interested in maximizing the value from it. So um, so I think it creates a lot of work that's artificial. That's my view.
Thank you, Mary Ann. I know you've been quite involved in this process. Yeah, okay. All right, um, I had some um, comments as I reviewed this yesterday. I just want to make sure, um, if we have time, um, I'll mention them. On the satellite view, um, most of the town was green and, and the area around this site was gray. And yet, I would think that the satellite view would also show that this area is, is somewhat green with trees and so forth. So I didn't know why. I mean, people would say, would, would focus on that maybe and say, why is it being shown that way?
Not, it's not this view you're talking about. This is.
At the very beginning, yeah.
Existing, existing town.
Yeah.
Map of existing town.
Right, and uh,
This one?
No.
No, further back.
I think it's the first slide it's shown.
Because the, the aerial view that's available, that we were able to get, was probably taken in the winter. And maybe this is Google Earth, the GIS plan and that what we can bring into it.
Went after that, right after that.
Right after this one.
Yeah, that one. Yeah, what is it? It's odd that it shows it. You think there really is uh, no greenery in that whole area?
No, 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 it was the, the, and maybe we, we, we shouldn't show it this way. We should just show a band around where Needham is. The, the idea for this is to highlight, and maybe it should be a different color and not green, but to highlight where Needham is within the larger context.
Oh, yeah.
So maybe we should just.
I thought if it was intended to show kind of the area that's developed uh, with parking lots and so forth and not much.
No, this is, yeah, no, this um.
All right, well, it just might create an issue.
And actually, this isn't, this is showing the area of the site, the where the site is located, because it doesn't show full Needham. Needham continues to go back here. So either we can eliminate this slide, or we can just uh, put a line around where Needham is, you know.
Um, no, I don't, the fact that we're showing part of Newton is the problem. I just didn't understand why the circle all around the red dot, you know, is not as green as the rest of the area.
I don't think you need this one.
Yeah, let's just take out the satellite view, because it's becoming confusing. This is, was more for us to do an analysis internally and then so we just shared this analysis with you, okay?
And then I don't think we need the historic sites slide. Um, it's obvious there are no historic sites. Nobody would even think there were any historic sites around here.
Okay.
It's just adds something that we don't really need. And on the one just before that, the amenities. Um, not that people will focus detail on it um, the way I did, but um, it's, it's so out of date. I mean, it's got the Hillside School and its old location. It, it, it mentions some amenities that are so obscure. It's like, why do we mention that?
This was, was on the GIS map that we pulled out, and so, so we can also eliminate this. If you feel like the, the, the whole point of this is to show that there's density and there's a corridor. So anything that detracts from that probably is not worth.
Liked the concept, but I, I.
That's okay. We can remove that. I mean, and it's all.
Like the fact that it shows the ones that have the dots and the stars that are important to us. I don't know if there's some, maybe nobody cares that it shows.
I think I would eliminate this. We just did this for ourselves, for the team internally, and we just shared them with you and thought that they were kind of interesting. But I think, I think the most important parts is the density. Yeah. The um, the transportation.
Transportation, absolutely.
And Highland Avenue Civic and Commercial Corridor that, that we put together. Do you, does everyone agree?
I, I kind of like the one with the amenities, and you could mention that it's out of date, but I understand the reasoning to, to not use it. That's, that's fine. I don't, I don't mind.
I think that the transportation one is so critical and the spine. Uh, you know, the spine that you talk about Natasha is also really critical, and you could mention uh, you know, the amenity, some of the, you could point out verbally some of the amenities along the uh, as you're talking about the spine.
Yeah, the ones that are important, um, and just ignore the other ones.
Right. So when we talk about here, but, but some of them, you know, some of the amenities are here, because this is the spine.
Yep.
Well, that's true. That's.
That's a good slide.
Yeah, that's, that's the critical one that I was.
That's really good. Maybe we just need that one. Um, and there's a slide that shows the um, acreage of each of the parcels. I think we should have a total, because I, I always keep thinking to myself, what's the total acreage we're talking about here? Um, I think we should present that total acreage.
So we could, we could show the, we could also show um, yeah, see, the plan that Lee, that you sent me yesterday that shows where the properties are.
All the assessors map.
The assessors map, would that be helpful?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I think that's kind of something that stays in people's minds, you know, like this. It's about a twelve or thirteen-acre parcel, I guess, but you know, just to have that figure out there.
Um, yes.
Um, yeah, and we talked about how we need a new use, a use chart.
Yeah.
Oh, in the view from Gold Street, all the views from Gold Street, we should make it clear that it's toward Highland. Um, you vote from
Okay.
toward Highland. Uh, it wasn't obvious to me when I first looked at it. You want it to be really obvious, what you're looking at. Um, um.
Sidewalk doesn't exist, does it?
The sidewalk? Uh, no, but we just, we just added it so you could see the opportunities for coming into it, so. Um, hold on, let me show you what it looks like right now. We can delete it. Um.
Yeah, I kind of think if there's no.
There is a sidewalk, but it's, but it's a um,
Asphalt.
It's asphalt. We can make it asphalt. We've just tried.
Only on one side of the street.
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe, well, of course, on our side of the street, we do have opportunities to make change, so we can.
So we, we could either eliminate it or we can make it asphalt.
I, I, I think it's fi- I think it's fine. It's just a, it's just a representation of all of this is just a somewhat of a facsimile of what's currently there.
Well, if it's easy to make it asphalt, so people don't get confused, then why not?
No, but this is a vision, well, this is.
I think we want to look, to talk about how, how it could, it could look too. So there could be an upgrade across the street.
Yeah.
Um, we talked about the black blocks and we could get rid of that.
Yes. Um, and we're going to add the P to the parking. We're going to change the colors of the, the green. The green seems to be in conflict with greenery and retail, so we'll change that color, the retail color.
Yeah. Um, yeah. Okay, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so uh, are there, is there any further guidance, Natasha and Susan, that you think you need going forward between now and next week?
No, I, I think we just, by next Thursday, we just want to make some of these, we need to make these changes to make sure that, that, that it feels like, like a cohesive presentation. And it's, you know, we're not missing anything, but I, I don't have any other suggestions. I think, I think emphasizing that having, that the contin- the continuation of the spine and the edge, I think um, for me is important as, as a resident and, and in planning this, you know. Um, so I don't know how that, that, you know, how you want to convey that, but I, I think that's yeah, an important piece of this exercise. I know that there's the, the the issue of what's zoning and what, you know, what do you allow developers to do to, to create opportunities for the site. So, and I don't know how, you know, you want to go about it, but I think stating that creating an edge in a mostly residential neighborhood that happens to be intersect, intersecting the highway and the main artery into the town. Um, it, it doesn't occur anywhere else in town, and there aren't too many precedents for this, but that we should really think about how we want the vision of our town to be and how we want the entrance of our town to be.
Folks, it's ten o'clock.
Okay, um, so I'll work with Natasha and we'll plan on meeting, I guess, next week, Thursday at eight thirty. Um, I don't think you, you should plan on seeing um, a draft presentation, probably any, any earlier than Wednesday. Um, um, by, by email. So we'll put the agenda together, but you, you won't be getting a revised proposal until quite close to the meeting.
Okay.
Okay, this, the agenda has minutes, but I haven't reviewed the minutes. We're, we're, we're putting that up till the nineteenth, the meeting of the nineteenth. Now, was there anything else you want to share with us at this meeting, Lee, with regard to correspondence or anything?
Not with, with regard to correspondence, but I also want to throw out another idea, because we talked about, you know, dropping the as-of-right FAR. I mean, the as-of-right height could also be dropped. I mean, if you look at, for example, in the Center Business District, um, the height as-of-right is two and a half stories. It's the increased height is accessed by special permit too. So there's two, I think there's two um, bars that could be looked at um, to create your base FAR, your base condition. An FAR and a height, in a, in a lower height, and you access the higher height, and you access the higher FAR, um, which allows you to implement the vision.
I, I just want to bring something, because that's really important, just a thought. Sorry to, to interject here, but I, I would recommend, rather than changing the FAR, is changing the height, because what happens is that if you change the FAR, the density of the site becomes a tiny little building within a large sea of parking. Um, versus if you change the height, you still keep somewhat of the density, which is appropriate for the site. But uh, it would discourage, it would discourage um, development, because it would create a larger floor plate all around versus going for special permit and making it, you know, um, having more FAR. I just feel like if you change it to point eight-five, I mean, right now, the, you know, half of the point five would be half of the site, right? Um, and you, and you have multiple levels. So the development, as you. Um and you, and you have multiple levels, so the development, as you shrink the FAR, the developments. A- and keep the same height, the development just kind of gets smaller, I don't know, Susan, do you have any, any?
No, I agree, I think looking at the height is another strategy, that's, that's worth pursuing, because you can maintain the density in the way you described.
Yeah, in, in fact, uh notes I had on comments, I was surprised to see. That the as of right height and the special permit height was the same, because usually in our business zones, that's the main thing we're changing. With the, with these.
What would you change the height by, eight or ten feet? Something like that?
Yeah, just make it a story less, so all of a sudden, you, you know, it's more like what, what's happening in the center in, of town. And um and it would encourage them to get a special permit.
Yeah, well, in the, in the center of town, it's um, it's, it's two and a half stories.
No, I know, but I'm just saying it, it's shorter than what we're showing, it's a, a story less, so it, you still have. But, but I'm just concerned that if you go below one, your density is going to get so small that someone, you know, could build a building in a, in a. And, and, you know, a parking lot, basically.
I know we're short on time, but if Mary Ann's still on, and I think she is, can we ask her to comment on whether she thinks that's an empty exercise too? We can hear you right now.
I would very much be in favor of, if you want to consider something, looking at height rather than FAR. Make more sense to me.
Thank you.
Good, so reducing the, the as of right height, at least for the large building in the back.
So what, what is the max height in by right, right, right now, I'm not certain that I know for sure, is it five stories or is it four?
It, it's, the front, the front four is forty-two, which is three stories, the back is seventy, which is five. So if you even say that the front could be, is two stories, let's just say. Um, we can see where that gets you in FAR, you know, we remove that one level and we'll tell you where we are with FAR, I guess.
Well, I think the back should also come down, would be my.
Four, yeah, maybe it's two and four versus three and five.
Two and a half and thirty feet is.
Well, you get that, you get the half because you still can do a roof on it, right?
Yeah, and it's very typical in our business zones.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense, yep.
The thing is, so Monday's a holiday, so I'm just trying to figure out, we're going to get as much as we can done for the next Thursday. Um, in, in the sense of, but, but changing some of these things and some of these heights, I'm going to see what it impacts and see, let's see how much we can get done. Um, it, it, you know, we'll get back to Lee, we'll get back to you and just kind of give you a big picture.
Okay.
Of, of what seems appropriate for this, and then we can still continue, you know, right after the meeting. Because that meeting, the meeting on, is, is only internal, is that, I mean, it's, it's the, the same, the same group right now, it's not the. It's not the full workshop that's happening.
Community meeting is not until February the third, so this is like an interim meeting, so we have time after that meeting to adjust this for, to, to develop things further.
I'd love, I'd love to invite Mary Ann uh, you know, to the next as well. Um, I see actually her hand is up.
No, no, I'm, I was trying to check something and I may have messed that up. Uh my hand was up, which was ridiculous, but I, I didn't mean that, is, is Mary Ann's hand up? Because I was trying to find her and I couldn't on my screen.
I do see her hand is still up, Mary Ann, did you?
Well, Mary Ann can still talk, she's still, I still see the picture.
Yeah.
Um, my question was, what is the by right height uh over a Needham Crossing?
Uh, just give me a sec.
The as of right one, Mary Ann?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and I don't know, I'm just trying to think about whether that's relevant or not, so that's. Sometimes we create different things all over the place, and I'm not sure that there's always a reason to create a different site specific thing. In each place, I don't know if it is a model for us or not, I just wanted to think about it.
Mary Ann, if I might, I'm not, I don't think that Needham Crossing, which is on the other side of one twenty-eight, and the other side of Highland Avenue. Is really relevant to this site, we have a vision for this site, which I don't see really as being. Um comparable to what's on the other side of one twenty-eight, which is, which is a different vision.
I agree with that.
Yeah, and also I think if we're going to have a comparison, it would be to other business zones that go toward our downtown rather than the ones across the road. Um.
I don't know that I necessarily agree with that, actually, I think that, you know, we're talking about the continuity of the spine that Natasha laid out at the beginning. And in that regard, I, I, I think that uh the other almost fully developed. As a result of new guy, uh new regulation across the park, uh across the highway at Needham Crossing. Is relevant, I do see the point that it's blending in closer to a residential section and it's coming in a little bit closer to town, and yet I do. I, I do see it as part of a bigger context, the spine that Natasha was referring to.
Yeah, but I think the spine is just along Highland Avenue, I don't think it includes what happens when you turn onto the side streets to get into Needham Crossing. Or get into the mixed juice one twenty-eight area.
Yeah, the Highland Commercial one twenty-eight, which that's, that's the frontage part of, of Highland on the other side is three stories. Right. Um.
Well, no, it's actually, yeah, it's fifty-four feet.
Right, fifty-four feet and it says three stories.
So that's, that's four stories.
That's, that, that's interesting confirmation if it's four stories, so.
Yeah, it's fifty-four feet.
Yeah, it's fifty-four feet, what was the three, or maybe it, maybe it doesn't have a stories. Yeah, just, but just, maybe, I mean, if they, they might want to, it could be three tall stories, yeah.
What's a useful comparison?
Folks, I have to leave.
Yeah.
Will you take a motion to adjourn or shall I just log off?
Um, are we ready to adjourn at this point?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn, we have a second.
Checking.
Okay, any discussion on that motion, all set, all right, uh call for vote, Martin Jacobs.
Hi.
Adam Block.
Hi.
Paul Alper.
Hi.
And Jean McKnight is, I, and we are, we stand adjourned.
Adam, a quick question, you're still available tomorrow for a meeting with GPI, all in your schedule?
Uh, tomorrow, yes, yeah.
Your entire day is free, okay.
So far.
Okay.
Okay, there is another meeting that I'm trying to play around with, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
We will be in touch, thank you.
Thank you.
Great work, guys.